Good afternoon and welcome. The Town of Los Gatos Special Meeting of the Town Council Study Session of August 20, 2024 is now called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Arista?
Here.
Councilmember Rennie?
Here.
Councilmember Moore? Council Vice Mayor Hudes?
Here.
Mayor Badami?
All right. We will move to our first order of the agenda, which is a study session regarding potential update to sidewalk vending ordinance. Ms. Wieland?
This is an opportunity for the Town Council to consider an update to its vending ordinances. The town currently has two ordinances in the town code that address vending on sidewalks. One is the peddler and solicitor ordinance and one is the push cart ordinance. Both ordinances were adopted in 1968 and it is time to update them. And it's especially time to update them in light of legislation that passed at the state level in 2019. And that's known as Senate Bill 946. And I do have a slideshow that will come up shortly. Senate Bill 946 had the goal of making it easier to engage in sidewalk vending in local jurisdictions and to decriminalize the activity and put limits on how local jurisdictions can limit that activity. The statute defines a sidewalk vendor as a person who sells food or merchandise from a push cart, stand, display, pedal-driven cart, wagon, showcase, rack, or other non-motorized conveyance, or from one's person upon a public sidewalk or other pedestrian path. The state law prohibits local jurisdictions from engaging in a number of different types of regulations. The first is that local jurisdictions can no longer require vendors to operate within specific parts of the public right-of-way unless that restriction is directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. So examples of objective health, safety, or welfare concerns would be visibility at intersections, visibility of traffic signals, as well as aesthetic concerns. The town can also not prohibit vendors from operating in a public park. However, the town can prohibit stationary vendors where the town has an agreement with a concessionaire that has an exclusive arrangement with the town. The town cannot require a sidewalk vendor to get the approval of a non-governmental entity before selling food or merchandise. And the town cannot restrict sidewalk vendors to operate only in designated neighborhoods unless that restriction is directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. And examples of those concerns would be the ones we just discussed, such as blocking an intersection line of sight, blocking a traffic signal, or aesthetic concerns. Senate Bill 946 also sets forth the items on which local jurisdictions retain the ability to regulate vendors. The town can prohibit stationary vendors in areas that are zoned exclusively residential. The town can adopt reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions in public parks so long as those restrictions are tied to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. The town retains the ability to limit the hours of operation so long as those hours are consistent with limitations imposed on other businesses on the same street. And so examples of time restrictions that I've seen elsewhere, currently the town's peddler permit restricts peddlers to operate between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. In other jurisdictions, I've seen limits that go 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. during the summer months and 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. during the winter months. In addition to imposing limits on the hours of operation, the town retains the ability to impose requirements to obtain sanitary conditions and to impose requirements that are necessary to ensure compliance with the Americans with Disability Act and other accessibility laws. And so examples I've seen in other ordinances are requiring a 48-inch clearance on the sidewalk around the vendor. In one jurisdiction, I saw a requirement that there be at least a five-foot pedestrian area or at least half of the sidewalk, whichever was greater. The town retains the ability to require the vendor to obtain a permit and business license, to possess a California seller's permit, and to acquire any other licenses that state or federal law requires. The town can require vendors to submit information regarding their operations and can prohibit vendors from operating near certified farmers' markets, swap meets, and other events that have obtained a temporary special use permit. In terms of the grounds for denying, conditioning, or revoking a permit, those grounds must be directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. So in a nutshell, the town does retain the ability to regulate sidewalk vendors to a certain extent so long as those regulations are tied to objective health, safety, and welfare concerns and don't conflict with SB 946. On the next slide, I have some questions for the Town Council to consider. Mayor, at this time, I could answer any preliminary questions and perhaps you could open it to public comment if there's anyone who's interested in commenting on this topic.
I will start with public comment. Would anybody like to speak on this item? I see no one coming forward. Are there any hands on Zoom? Oh, I have a speaker. Mr. Fago, please come forward.
I just want to say that I do have some concerns as a longtime resident of the town that these street vendors, a few that I've seen recently, could change a sense of quietness, calmness in a neighborhood, also litter, and the other is that sense of safety. Access around some of these street vendors is going to be important. There needs to be enough space. So I would suggest that you put in a permit requirement that they need to, they can't just come without a permit. There has to be some oversight, some way of accountability, and a way of finding out who these people are and having them register and getting a permit is a way to do it, I believe. So that is allowed and I think that's one thing that should be part of the ordinance from the town. So again, thank you and I'll stop at that unless you have any questions.
Any questions? I see none. Thank you. Are there any hands on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom, although I do have comments submitted from Councilmember Moore if you'd like to take them at this time.
There's a question from Councilmember Arista. Otherwise, we'll move to comments. Do you have questions? Let's start with questions.
Yeah, if we could start with questions. I did have a question for our town attorney. In here, where it talks about limiting the hours of operation in non-residential areas, cannot be more restrictive than any limitations on hours. What I'm thinking about is if you're in a non-residential area and you've got businesses, they have different hours of operation. So for example, if some businesses are closing at 6:00 p.m. and we have a bar that's open until 1:00 a.m., what judgment do we have around that? Because I am hoping it's not set by the latest business open.
I have a feeling that a court would interpret it to mean the latest hours of operation. But in terms of operating near nightclubs or places like that, some cities do impose a distance requirement, so that's an option for the council to consider.
Okay, thank you, because our businesses downtown have a variety of closing times. The other question I had, if I could ask one more, is, you know, if we're talking about in parks, are parks closed at sunset? So I would want to, you know, is that something too nebulous? Would it be better for us to set hours, like when you talked about some areas having 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. summer, you know? Would we have to extend that because the park is open later or could we close sooner? And then in the winter, sunset is before 6:00 p.m.?
Yeah, because originally I was considering recommending sunrise to sunset, but I do think since the town will be issuing administrative citations, the regulation has to be clear in the ordinance. And so I do think the 9:00 to 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. are good, solid standards. But the town could even go earlier than that if the town wanted to do, you know, 9:00 to 5:00 or 10:00 to 5:00, as long as it's reasonable and we're not foreclosing an opportunity for someone to do sidewalk vending altogether.
And one further question, when there was the discussion of an all-residential area, does that impact a park that is bounded 100% on all sides by residential or are parks considered non-residential?
The way the statute reads is zoned for exclusive residential use. And so I would interpret that to mean that the town can't preclude them in parks unless there's a concessionaire that has the exclusive right to sell within that park. But the town can prohibit them in areas that are zoned only to allow residential uses.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I wanted to see if I could get a little bit more context to this. So two things. The first is, what has the history been of street vending in Los Gatos? Has there been an uptick? Has there been an issue with our current ordinance with people challenging it?
Yes, we code enforcement has received a number of calls about a street vendor on Blossom Hill Boulevard. And so council for that vendor and I have been in touch regarding the town's peddler's permit. And he has pointed out that there are provisions of the town's peddler permit ordinance that have been preempted by SB 946. Those provisions are not being enforced. They're severable and so the town can still enforce its peddler's permit. But it does seem like an opportune time to update the ordinance so that it doesn't have any unenforceable provisions. Vice Mayor?
Maybe they get a little more context other than this one vendor. What's the history been of this and have we done enforcement or have we changed the way that we're dealing with street vendors?
As far as I know, the town hasn't received many code enforcement calls in the past. This year is the first year since I've been here and I'm not entirely sure what happened before then.
Mr. Paulson, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Joel Paulson, Community Development Director. So it hasn't been a big issue in addition to the one mentioned on Blossom Hill and Los Gatos Boulevard. I believe there's also one on Highway 9 code compliance is currently dealing with. And typically, we deal with complaints. And so I have seen, you know, some of the fruit vendors that sometime are stationary sometimes walk around, but it hasn't been a big complaint-driven issue from community development department's standpoint.
Vice Mayor?
So what are the biggest departures from our current ordinance with the state regulations?
The primary one is that the town's current peddler ordinance limits people to operate between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. And per Senate Bill 946, the latest hours of operation can't be any earlier than businesses located on the same street. And so currently, the town's peddler permit ordinance requires sidewalk vendors to shut down before other businesses on the street, which is not permitted under SB 946.
Is that it? Anything else?
There's other minor differences. That's the primary difference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go to the comment from Rob Moore. Ms. Wood, if you would read that for us?
Sure. This is from Councilmember Moore. Mayor and council, unfortunately, I would not be able to attend the study session this evening, so not be there in person. I wanted to send my brief thoughts. My general comments on sidewalk vending are that I would like to maximize the amount of discretion the town has to deal with a variety of different sidewalk vendors we have in Los Gatos. Though I recognize that it is difficult legally, I would support any way that we can continue to honor the original intention of the sidewalk vending ordinance, allowing folks with rolling carts to sell street food and discouraging unforeseen used, set up large disruptive canopies to sell t-shirts and other merchandise. I would estimate that I have received at least 10 comments from the public concerned about the vendors set up near the Chevron and 76 gas station. So I do feel it is important to address this community concern. Thank you for your consideration. Rob Moore.
Question for the town attorney. So allowing folks with rolling carts to sell street food, that's something that they would have to obtain a permit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Arista?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when we're talking about the hours, it gets really hard in a downtown area, for example, when we might have one or two restaurants that open up to serve breakfast and then most stores don't open until 10:00 or 11:00 and then most places are closed by 9:00 and then we might have one bar that's open until 2:00. So I just want to delve into this. So really, it would not be okay to say between 9:00 and 9:00 p.m. if there are businesses that, a small number of businesses that open earlier and one single business that is open later? And then to continue on that, how do we decide nearby? Do we do it block by block or do we say the whole downtown area, for example?
I believe the statute says other businesses on the same street. And so I can delve further into the question of whether that means the latest business or the median of when the business is closed. I can look at that further. Probably the easiest answer would be to prohibit sidewalk vendors near businesses that are open late. Some jurisdictions have done that on the grounds that they want to allow emergency vehicle access to those clubs and they feel that the vendors would get in the way. So that's one avenue to consider.
So I would say that item number four is probably going to be the more complicated one and we actually have four discussion points. So I would say if we could try to knock these down and start with number one, which is what Mr. Fago had referenced, does the Town Council recommend prohibiting sidewalk vending in areas that are zoned exclusively residential? Well, I would say yes. I would say that it's disruptive. There's no accountability and oversight. I would want better controls and I don't think it's appropriate to have that in our residential neighborhoods. I don't know if my fellow council members agree with me. Councilmember Arista?
I also agree with that. I think the exclusive residential neighborhoods, that would be very disruptive. One of the things I think about, on the other hand, is, does that prohibit a lemonade stand?
Does a lemonade stand need a permit or, you know, a little eight-year-old selling cookies and lemonade?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's no distinction in SB 946 between those two activities.
That's sad. And it would take a complaint for somebody.
That's true.
Right, I was thinking about that, if it's complaint-driven. I guess the other concern I have is that our residential areas are pretty extensive and, you know, is all code compliance going to be complaint-driven or would we have some monitoring if there were a number of street peddlers or street vendors set up in a certain area or near a park?
I'll defer to the CD Director on that one.
Thank you. So we would be complaint-driven. However, there's no shortage of complaints on a number of other issues. So people will be able to make those complaints. If there is something egregious that staff notices when they're in the field, then there may be some proactive action, but typically, it's going to be reactive.
I would also say that I don't see as many lemonade stands as I did in the past. I don't think parents, like their kids, sitting out on the street with strangers stopping by unless the parent's there. I'll go to Councilmember Rennie, followed by Councilmember Arista.
First thing, I want to log my complaint that yet again, the state is taking away local control. This is irritating. They've found more ways to continue to do that. I think we should have discussions with our state legislators to think a little bit more. And a lot of them haven't been in local government and end up as state legislators. So I'm not sure they've thought through it that well. It's getting to the point, well, what's the point of the Town Council if the state is taking all of our control away? So that's my complaint to start. Then continuing on, do you want to go down at one, all my thoughts thrown in? Are we trying to stay?
I'm trying to stay focused on number one.
So I agree, yes, I think we want all vendors to be required to obtain a permit so that if they're, you know, not following the rules or for some reason we can take their permit away, then you have to have a permit system. And I would also say that we have a lot of ordinances, particularly in our parks, that really are only complaint-driven. And I know when, in the past years, when we've talked about some of those things, I've thought, well, I don't really want to have all these rules. But it was pointed out to me that usually we don't enforce them. The rules are there. When there's a problem, that then gives the police a lever to do something about the problem. I don't think our police are going to have time to go police lemonade stands by young girls kind of thing. So I'm not sure I'd worry so much about that.
Okay, so I haven't heard from the Vice Mayor, but I'm seeing some consensus on item number one and two. A yes, yes?
Yes, both of those.
Okay. Ms. Wieland, so I'm sure you're taking note of that.
Yes, thank you.
So we can move on to number three.
So the third question was to elicit concerns that the council might like to see addressed in a future draft ordinance that are related to health, safety, and welfare. And the ones that come to mind are the appearance of the vendor stations, the placement and their visibility intersections and where there are traffic signals. One interesting rule I've seen in other ordinances is a prohibition on the pop-up tents. And so that might be something for the council to consider in terms of the appearance of the stands. And then I'm interested in your feedback on placement and visibility.
Councilmember Rennie?
So I would do anything we can to limit, you know, it being a big visual problem. So I agree with the idea of limiting pop-up tents. You know, we went through a lot of effort to create rules for our parklets to make sure that it's quality materials and it looks good. And I don't know the right things to say, but I think we should have something to do with appearance that stays consistent with the other rules that we forced other people Other problems I foresee is businesses complaining that somebody set up in front of their business and people can't see their sign, they can't see their front door. And I know it's difficult, but I'd like for a way to try to avoid that or allow our police department to do something about it. You know, if somebody always sets up in front of a shop that can't be seen anymore, I think that's going to be a big problem. And I don't know the right answer, but I'd like us to think about that. The other challenge I've always had with these pop-ups is the competition with the businesses, right? There's businesses that have invested a lot of money in leases and tenant improvements and then if there is a competing vendor that pops up in front of them, that's not fair. And I realize the law, it sounds like there's nothing we can do about that, but I'll put that in my second complaint bucket, that, you know, it's not really fair to the people that, you know, a lot of them invested their livelihood in this and this could be an issue. So I don't know the right answer, but where they can be placed and, you know, blocking businesses, I think is a concern. And we have some narrow sidewalks, too. So if they just set up anywhere, they could completely block the flow of the sidewalk, which I think can become a health and safety concern if people have to now step off the curb, twist their ankle trying to go around these things. You know, if there get to be two people coming opposite directions and then there's a vendor stuck in the way, we need to have some way to prevent this because to me, that sounds like a health and safety issue. The other part that worries me a little bit is proper cleanup. If there gets to be food scraps and things left around, that starts to get into the health realm, particularly if we start getting animals that come afterwards in the evening and so forth. We sort of skipped past the residential part a little bit. Parks are considered residential. My comments are, I'm okay with vending in parks, I think because it doesn't really affect our other businesses in town. What worries me is vending after dark where they, and maybe we need to think about where in the parks they can set up because they set up in a dark corner, they can start doing nefarious things, selling drugs or something after dark. That's going to be more difficult to police, I think. And certainly, the neighbors are going to start worrying about that. So we're going to start getting a bunch of calls from neighbors. So again, I want to set this up so that we can address the neighbors' concerns, you know, the police can address their concerns as much as possible when these kinds of things come up. And these are some of the problems that I'm foreseeing. I'll shut up now.
Vice Mayor?
A few comments on that group. So I think, you know, the intent is to provide some services for folks who may not be in the community where these services are close by. And so the, but essentially what we're doing is we're taking a public space and turning it over to a private enterprise. And so I think, you know, we need to be really careful about how that's done. So for instance, if it were in a park, would it be in a place that detracts from the public's use of that part of the park? So I think we need to think, you know, in terms of the placement, I think we need to be really careful when we allow private enterprises to take over our public spaces. The other thing I'm very concerned about is ADA access and on sidewalks. And so it's not just a matter of, you know, some folks having to step into the street. It goes way beyond that. It is, you know, preventing folks with disabilities from being able to move from place to place on public sidewalks. So, you know, in terms of what the state is requiring us to do... So, you know, in terms of what the state is requiring us to do in terms of sidewalks, I think that we should go to sort of the maximum that's required for ADA access. And if that's five feet or five feet plus or half of the sidewalk, whichever is greater, you know, five feet sounds terrific, but if it's already a crowded sidewalk with a lot of other folks on it, that five feet may not be enough. So that's why the five-feet-plus sidewalk, whichever is greater, may be half the sidewalk, which may be a better consideration. I wouldn't feel that way if our residents were clamoring for these services because they don't have access to these kinds of services, as that's true in some communities. But in this community, there are a lot of options for, you know, apparel and food and all kinds of things that would be provided by street vendors. So, you know, I think that those are just some thoughts that I have on this category, you know, that I think we should consider when we're writing some regulations on this.
I would add a comment, if you don't mind. I'll get to you next. Street vendors, I'm not so concerned about that, Vice Mayor. And when you think about it, if you want our community members that are kind of isolated, and this gives them an opportunity to have access to, you know, a service that they might not normally have access to, or, you know, they've got to drive for or whatever, street vendors by nature, they're not permanent. So if they even come to rely on one, they're here today, gone tomorrow. My takeaway on all of this is that vendors take away from our businesses. We're not a vending kind of town. I think it adds to a flea market look, and I would like this to be as restrictive as possible in doing the research and come back with options in that regard. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I appreciate all of the really good points that my fellow council members have brought up, because I have similar concerns in terms of the sidewalks. I think for sure, five feet minimum has to be clear. You know, and I think not only about people with disabilities or crowds walking, I think about moms pushing strollers. Our sidewalks are meant for the passage of pedestrians, and we need to retain at least five feet. And I know if people coming in two directions and one has a walker and one has a stroller, that won't even be enough. But I don't know that we have, I think most of our sidewalks are at least six feet. But so I'd be interested to know in how much sidewalk we can preserve. When I was thinking about visibility, I have big concerns on corners where somebody might set something up that then makes a driver who's trying to make a right turn unable to see pedestrians or cyclists coming toward them or having to pull into the street to turn. So I think maybe looking at our fence ordinance or, you know, shrubbery ordinance on corners and what we allow permanently on corners and how far back it needs to be to allow visibility should also apply to sidewalk vendors. The other concern I have is the visibility of local businesses. So to the extent that we can prohibit somebody from setting up immediately in front of another business, because I can foresee a lot of issues with that. And I know that we have businesses that were concerned about losing some visibility with the parklets, and I think we worked very hard on that design to make sure that we had maximum visibility through them. I don't want to see that taken away because somebody now sets up a booth right in front of somebody's window or doorway. And then finally, I'd like to see a size limitation. I would for sure say I like the idea of no pop-ups. And if somebody has a table out there, maybe we restrict the size of the table, and the signage can be no bigger than whatever fits in front of the table or something. So I think we're going to need height limitations and size limitations so that we don't have big giant signs or blockage of what we already have.
Councilmember Rennie?
So one thing I started thinking about is, a lot of our commercial space is actually not owned by the town. It's private. So does this California ordinance allow them to set up on, can they go set up in the Downing Center anywhere they want? Or they could only set up on the sidewalk piece?
Yeah, no, it's only public property.
And some of the sidewalk on Santa Cruz is not owned by the town. Is that correct? There's areas where it's really wide, and I was under the impression that the building owners actually own some of that. And how are we going to make sure, if that's the case, that these vendors are not setting up on private property without their permission, I guess?
In the ordinances I've seen, there's a permit process, and as part of the application, the vendor indicates where they're planning to be located. And so when that application comes in, the town could evaluate it to make sure that that is in fact public right-of-way.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I can't even read my own writing. I missed one. In terms of parks, if we're going to talk about parks, I think it would be helpful to have a map of each and every town-owned park and designate which areas someone can set up so that maybe it's vetted by, okay, it's near a streetlight, or it's near a specific area, or it's not blocking something, so that we don't give somebody a permit to set up, for example, in Bachman Park, and they set up, you know, right in the middle of where dogs play or in the middle of where somebody wants to have a soccer game or something. You know, any of the parks, I can envision, there's areas that people use for recreating, and then there's edge areas that would make more sense. So I don't know. I would love to see if staff could do that, like look at each and every park, and maybe with the input that we've got, sort of figure out what would be the most reasonable place to put it. And I don't know if we can limit how many vendors could be at a location, but I do think if we restrict the amount of space, that might naturally curb it. But I do think it's going to be important to know in advance if somebody doesn't come up and want a permit, and then there has to be discretion at that point to figure out where somebody goes.
Councilmember Rennie?
Another thought back to the private property. So let's say a place like Forbes Mill Steakhouse allows pop-up vendors to use their parking lot so that all of our worries about space and everything go away, but the visual part of it doesn't go away. Would this ordinance still apply to them setting up on private property in our downtown district, for example?
This ordinance would only apply to the use of public right-of-way. And so the private parking lots would need to be addressed another way. And one way might be the conditions of approval for that planning approval, if they got one. Or, you know, we have a nuisance code, or there's probably other avenues in the town code.
Okay, because I still have the same kinds of concerns that if they're going to set up in the private property portions of the downtown, that it, you know, has somewhat of a quality look to it and, you know, is cleaned up properly and so forth.
Any further comments? This might be from Mr. Paulson. How often do we see or get complaints of these vendors in private parking lots?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I would have to check with code compliance to get anything definitive, but I don't believe it comes up very often.
Okay. Right. I don't see any other hands up, and it looks like we've had a pretty robust discussion of what we would like to see and what we would not like to see. So hopefully, that'll help you to come back at a later date. Vice Mayor?
One comment on the hours of operation. I think that given the discussion that we've had, it makes sense to look at it on a block-by-block basis. You know, the term "street," you know, you could take North Santa Cruz, and it goes for several miles. And so, you know, would, any, you know, any business operating past midnight would give somebody a ride a mile away? That doesn't make sense. So I would suggest that we look at it block by block.
Okay, I think this closes out the item, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.